All right, let's go to the personnel section. Can I have a motion?
No, no motion.
Caster? One second. Thirty seconds.
Okay. Section A is the employment of professional personnel. Section B is employment of professional personnel pending the issuance of a first class permit and/or an outfield offer section. Section C is the employment of professional personnel pending the issuance of certification. Section D is employment of extracurricular athletic personnel. Section E is resignation and/or retirement, which is indicated at the under effective date. Reclassification of the following central office service personnel who report to and are supervised by administrators for significant administrative duties effective April seventeen, two thousand thirteen, and toward back page on that date. Robin Atkins, Accountant Three, Executive Secretary, and Rita Edmonds, Executive Secretary for halftime. Abolish the service personnel posting, the SFD thirteen dash three, Central Office Executive Secretary slash Coordinator, pending June fifth, two thousand thirteen.
Questions? Comments? I'd like to clarify. Currently, what is Rita Edmonds's classification?
Secretary.
Secretary three. So she's Secretary Three. What is Block's project this time?
Accountant Three.
Well, is she an executive secretary now or?
She's Secretary Three.
Okay, so she's, prior to this, she's Accountant Three, Secretary Three. All right, any further discussion or comments? Okay, I'll ask a question. Although it's in favor of the personnel, all the personnel items as stated, signify by saying yes. Karen?
Yes.
No.
I'll vote with the yes. The motion carries. Phil, somebody voted no. It was three against. Okay. Let's hear the personnel's area. Now, let's go down to the comments section. First, we have Harts locker room project.
Okay, I would like, I want, when you are discussing that, I might add, Dana, to the awesome input.
Let me probably kick off this mic here. As everybody knows, this coincides with what we talked about previously as far as what's happening at the old Harts middle high school. I can't keep you from the high school. I was just like, just found by it. You know, we've been trying to, one of the reasons we wanted to maintain the ball fields was for our PKX school in Harts to play softball and football every next week. But at the same time, we realized that they had to have facilities to get dressed and those kind of things to go along with it. We'd entertained the idea, and we're still entertaining, I suppose, of renovating one of the existing buildings to provide the locker room space. So I'm sure that's one of the things that Dana will talk about. There's some other things yesterday as far as separating the property with water meters. In the interim, I know I've given this a lot of thought as to how we are going to best serve our students up there. Also, there are some in the community that say that we can continue to use the existing school locker room facilities and not go to the expense and time of developing another area for the same thing. Last Monday, Mr. Curry, we've, it's been a while since we've been up there, so we went up there and we'd been invited by some community group there to come up and just look around. So we did that. We had a good productive meeting of thought and we talked with them. And we just wanted to look at everything. We went through the building that we had proposed and renovated, the old annex building, the two-story building. We looked at the concession building. Then we went into the high school, former, the middle school building itself. We looked at the locker room facilities to see really what was present and how all that worked out. So from there, they made it clear that the community group there in their board meeting has stated that the school children have top priority for the use of that facility, whether it be in the gym or basketball each season or whether it be the locker rooms for that or the locker rooms you provide for the football teams, the home visiting teams. So we went through there. Of course, if you do that, you see the way that it's laid out, that the exits from the locker rooms go directly out towards the ball field and all those kind of things. They made it clear to us that their top priority of that facility was for the school children in the Harts community, which is obviously what our top priority is there. At the same time, they had some questions they wanted to talk to us about as far as use of the field there by the community. They're having a health fair that they're proposing to have, and they were, had some apprehension that maybe they would be reutilized, the fields, when they had activities going on. Okay, our, once again, our feeling for that, schools are for educated kids first, but they're also for the community, you know, they're community schools. And what we wanted to, Board of Education, I think I speak for all of us, we want to work in unison with communities to provide not only what we do, but what can help them. Of course, there's procedures you've got to follow, you know, you have to use a facility, you've got to give provision, and sometimes that necessitates insurance or whatever. But anyway, we wanted to make it clear that, you know, we want to make our facilities available as we always do to the community. And I think that really somewhat because they were wanting to have a health fair and bring in, have tents set up on the field and all this kind of thing. And that's, we want to encourage that, you know, we're a part of that community, our students are part of, our parents are. So anyway, we left there after what I thought was a very productive meeting. I think I was being able to talk to one another and to hear the concerns of one group had versus the other. I'll let Mr. Curry speak for himself. That's what, the concern that I've had, as I've thought through this for the past month, I guess, is the one thing I've been able to get all this ready for fall was to renovate the locker room. And the other is the cost of doing it. And I weigh this back and forth in my mind. Is that really necessary to do or are we in a financial position and we want to do that and all those kind of things? I'm a, I personally feel, and everybody can express their own, is that I don't really feel that we should enter into trying to develop our locker rooms, and we already have locker rooms there. And if everybody is willing to work together to use those, you know, why are we going to go to this expense? And once again, that's just my personal thoughts on the whole thing. It's already there, it's in proximity to everything. Now, there are some things that need to be done on our side of the property that doesn't involve that, or some things that we were shown there that we need to take care of. And we'll share those with you, but that's kind of where we are right now. One other thing, the sheriff has indicated that he would like, if he chooses not to purchase the locker room and all that, that he would like to place a deputy sheriff over top on the second floor of that annex building. So, and then the community group is going to move the trailer that's in Harlesburg right now down beside the school where they have a groundskeeper that monitors things there anyway. So in that situation, you have a groundskeeper and you would also have a deputy that would be housed right above on the second floor there.
You say living there or?
Yeah, living there.
He lives there.
He would live there. So, you know, it's for security reasons for both groups that would be advantageous. But we didn't, I just want to throw that out to you to see if that's the direction you want to go, if you still want to pursue the renovation. Locker room. After discussion.
Well, I totally agree with Mr. Fred then after looking at the place, it isn't really big enough for a football locker room, but it might have two chairs total, only two visiting and a home team. It'd be real expensive to put, because it's got a concrete floor, you have to raise the floor up to get the drainage stuff in it. So it'd just be real expensive to convert it into a locker room, sharing, and dressing room. And let's say the dressing room is facing the ball field, we run out to the exit door or outside door and go right to the ball field, and the people that want us to use up the dressing room. And it doesn't make sense to me for us to spend any money on the dressing room if we don't have it. And, but we do need to, we'll have to do some work to get it ready for the deputy sheriff. I understand there's no plumbing upstairs, no restroom, but that's not that big a deal. We have a lot cheaper than.
That would not be big deal.
Yeah. And I think the concession stand, they want us to install an air conditioner, but they're going to get the air conditioning for us. And, and they desperately need exhaust fan, they.
They need some work on the nuggets too.
Yeah, they need, yeah, they sure do.
There's several things that we need to do.
I've just provided Mrs. Lucas a list of things that went over the meeting.
I think they've got a light pole, but one of the lights, one light pole is not working too. But I think it could be down in the junction box where y'all can get to it.
Actually, there's light poles that are on site there, are taken care of by the power company. So all it takes is an eight hundred call and they'll fix it, no charge. We pay monthly fee for those. But that won't be, that won't be a difficult thing to get out.
Are you saying the bulbs and the lights?
They change the bulbs, they maintain the light if it gets damaged. So it's just a matter of calling and.
So we need, if it's down in the junction box, a bad connection or something, they'll repair it?
Normally, those are not wired from any junction box, they're directly wired from the power.
Those type junction boxes on the poles.
Now, there's one light up there that was installed by the, by the board at one time. There's one light there on a smaller pole that doesn't work. But we, when we put the big lights on the pole poles, that should have eliminated any need for that one.
Well, I understand you may have said like Christian Berger, what's the problem, where the problem is at? Because he said, whoever talked to us, said the whole bank of lights were out, it wasn't just one light. So that tells me that there's a problem in the wiring.
But these are the pole lights, right?
Yes.
Well, all the pole lights except for one is owned by the power company.
Okay.
And, and like I said, if there's one power company that's not working right, that's a call. And we arranged those lights when we had them installed. I meant the power company that would have installed those. It eliminated the need for the lights that the board owns.
Yeah.
There's no need for it because there's lights from the power company that shine the light at the same point. I believe. I think I'm right. Unless we miss one somewhere.
I noted a few things as Fred and I went around there, and I've given that to the commissioner, but like the two-way antenna is for the buses, not still on the, the school building. It should be probably relocated to our side. I've made a list there.
Were the buses locked that antenna for the?
It's a two-way antenna that sits on top of the locker room building.
For the diesel tank? I'm confused on what you.
Oh, when did you take it?
I didn't hear about it.
I don't know, you'll have to look and see, but there's a two-way, one of the, there was a couple of bus drivers there too, and they just noted that, and they just sent that to me, and so I just put it down there really.
Do they have radio?
They do have a, there is an antenna for the radios and there's an antenna for the, maybe for the diesel tanks that reports diesel usage, and there's a couple of things.
I thought it was like the radios for the buses, but I may be off.
Well, we could relocate that over in the annex building.
Yeah, that's what they're saying. Crazy, it just sits on top of the.
That's an easy, that's an easy fix.
So far, everything we've given has been easy.
Yeah.
We've made this summer, summer will be a breeze for you now. But there's a couple of things here. I know Fred was concerned about the steps of the concession stand, they're wooden, whether or not that, you know, comply.
Going up to the press box.
Okay.
Guy fell through it today, I think.
Oh. Okay.
He broke one of them when he went up.
Okay.
So we're either going to have to.
Just need to replace the board.
I thought about metal ones, the thing, if we could get a process of metal in there.
Okay. We can do that.
But some of those, like that in the renovating, you know, if you had to put in a restroom area, kitchen, small kitchen area on top of that, I don't think that's a pressing thing. It has to be done immediately, that deputy can situate himself there after it's done. Probably send that. But they're very quiet, but once again, you know, the concession stand, we talked about that, need for an air conditioner in there, and they said, you know, just before really transition takes place, get, take one out of the third floor building and just put it in there. Anyway, what do you all think about that? Which way do you want to pursue the area? Sounds good to me? Yeah, well, actually. Let's go ahead and use existing.
I think we need to work together, and if there ever becomes a day where we're not working together, we won't worry about it. As long as we're not in any market.
Well, that's the way out here. If we ever got to the point where we didn't have any option, like some devastating thing, if something happened to the building, oh, obviously we have to.
I'm all for working together. Anytime we work together, it makes for counter.
So Dana? That relieves you a little bit, but don't worry, we'll come up with something else for you. You knew that, didn't you? But now, we still have to move our water meter and all that stuff.
That's all range. Well, I mean, thank you.
Ms. Lucas, do you agree with her?
I think it's wonderful. I'm totally agree. You know, it's going to benefit the students first and the community. I think it's great. It's good to hear. I'm glad you guys will come there and come in with them. You know, it just, it helps us out. Dana does, we were right on top of trying to get, you know, just get a plan in place to get things together, but, you know, it's really, really good. Luke's to hear it.
I only had Dase Berg, because she said dollar signs.
We're saving money, that's good. And it's easy, oh Dana, good and easy.
So there's nothing that would compare to the season start, everything?
Actually, this would be good, because there's a lot of things that even like storage of all their football equipment, all those kind of things, you know, right now that are in the other building, that would be an issue that we're having to face, reading store all this, but some things, that's why it's good to actually go there on site and look at things, because some things that you don't really think about become clearer, then they point out that if they are.
Well, I think the community board, Ms. Davis and the coaches would want to get a roof. They have in the past, and I think do well in the future.
Yeah, yeah. Be careful with the song. Okay, I'll turn to the next one.
The garbage collection, I want to remember to Mr. Sam.
I guess talking about trash, you know, it's exciting.
Duckle of trash.
That's just some information I've got. We've got some, we're fortunate to have some competition on the garbage normally, that's not an option to go with another garbage company, but you do have that option. There's some things I don't like about both of these proposals. There's no summer, you know, you've got a couple of months there during the summer that, there needs to be an alternate schedule for the summer. In fact, we used to have one for the summer, where instead of picking up twice a week, we'd pick up once a week. And we're going to try this year to address some of the issues, like people dumping on us. So over in Valley today, they've got one dumpster that is surveyed, surveyed. They've got one that's not. The one that's not, about third full, and there was a bag of garbage that we own in it. So we're going to try to address some of those issues.
Sunday morning at the high school, I was walking and somebody drove up and.
Yeah, of course, they do that here too. In fact, we, we got on our camera and found, found one the other day dumping on us, and took care of it. But we're going to try to do a little better doing that, which will save us money, which will reduce our capacity. There's two things that, that makes the expense, and that's the number of pickups and the size of the dumpster. So if we can reduce that in any way, we're going to, we're going to pay less. In looking at the two companies, I believe that there's, there's no doubt that Allied or Republic, whatever they, they're calling themselves these days, they've got both down. Does have better rates, but, you know, our service hasn't been any good. Sometimes if they're supposed to pick up twice a week, they pick it up once a week and put us in a bind. The dumpsters have been in poor condition, they've had holes rusted in, doors on them don't work, health department writes us up. Of course, they, they contact them occasionally and try to help us improve the condition of the dumpsters. They do that for us. But I think having some competition and maybe giving this other company a location to let Allied know that we've, that we need better service, that might, might be a good thing, even if you pay them a bit more, so. But that's what, the information I have to date. I'll try to get a summer, or see if it's still legal to have a summer schedule, an alternate schedule for summer. The, like, for example, one of the companies is picking up West Hamlin once a week during school time, and it needs to be picked up twice a week, and one of the companies did have it being picked up twice a week. So that, that's why you'll see one company lower on one school and one company higher on the other. But overall, I think you'll see that Allied and Republic's rates are, are generally low. The, the competition may help us get better service. Another issue, Allied and Republic has had some severe injuries with the big dumpsters that they, they still use, and they're trying to eliminate them, and that's why you see at Harts that they're using four-yard dumpsters. And they're going through that, eventually we'll, we'll have, if we use them, they've actually had loss of limbs and some fatalities where they've dropped and hit their own employees. Of course, back when that happened, it was in another county, we sent out letters to all our custodians to make sure that nobody was around, nobody would be allowed around the dumpsters when they're loaded or unloaded, the dumpsters. That's the reason they are only eventually going to have four-yard dumpsters. Now, the other company, you see at Harts, they did put two dumpsters in that were large, ten yards dumpsters, which would look a lot better, would fit in there better. If it's picked up twice a week, it should accommodate the school. And rather than having six of those others there on site, looks, looks bad. But there, there's a safety issue. If we can keep our people away from them when they're unloaded, then we should be okay, but that's, it is an issue. I just wanted to bring that one up for you to think about if you, when you provide me some direction.
You'll have to use Allied on the east end of county regardless, is that what I'm bringing?
When, when I was looking at this, it's convenient for Dalton to do the other side of the county, it's not real convenient for them to do the other side. So that's what they quoted. They seemed willing at some point in time, if we wanted to go countywide, they, they were willing to do that. I, we haven't had as much problem with the service on the other side as we have, and Harts and Ranger especially. And even, even right before school started, before school ended this year, we had some problems at both those locations. Where they failed to pick up when they were supposed to. Of course, in their letter, I've put a copy of their letter where I've addressed those issues with them, and they say they're going to do much better on those issues. And now that they've got some competition, that's, that may, that may help it happen. But I'll provide, I'll provide the information to you in the future as I get things updated and if I can get an alternate schedule, I'll, I'll provide all that information to you.
This Dalton has locally owned a bar street too, aren't they?
Yes, they are.
I will be a fan and support the local business.
Me too.
Well, that's, that's the reason I'm kind of in favor of at least giving them the Harts location.
That was going to be my question. Are you recommending that we give them a couple of water to school?
We would be paying more, but yeah, I, I think we should.
Harts and Ranger or?
Harts, Harts and maybe Ranger, but there's probably a difference in price of Ranger. I would probably recommend just doing Harts, but, you know, if you want to do Harts and Ranger, we can, we can do that.
And you think with Allied, we have a month-to-month contract for?
I, I don't think we should sign any contract that would allow us not to be, to be able to change, because that'll be our leverage. If we want to add Ranger to Dalton later down the road, that would allow us to do that. I think we should just have a purchase order, a blanket purchase order that would specify on the purchase order what they're to do or how much. And then not sign a contract, and that will allow us some flexibility if one not, is not serving the way that they should, or if we want a new dumpster midway, so, you know, if you don't want to get our equipment where it needs to be, then maybe look at, add some locations to the other thing.
That'd be true of both companies.
Yes, yes. Give us leverage with both of them.
I'm looking at West Hamlin. It says West Hamlin for Allied, it says seven hundred fifty-nine. That would be picking it up twice a week, is that what it says?
Yes.
And, and what the other one, then one time a week, four hundred fifty bucks, is that right?
It needs to be picked up twice a week.
Twice a week, okay. I just want to make sure that I was.
And that's why their price at Dalton's is lower at that location than, than the other one.
But at Guyan Valley, okay, Guyan Valley, the gym, they pick it up two times, is that right? And for thirty-eight dollars, that three times for the, no, I'm sorry, three times for the gym and three times for the middle school? Is that combined, or do they charge us four hundred sixty-six dollars?
The, the frequency, the three, is three times a week.
But, but they got two hundred thirty-three dollars out there twice.
That, that's the monthly rate at. That's a duplicate.
That's what, well, but.
I believe that's a duplicate.
The gym is two times, but then it says the middle school is three times.
They've just got to one location, I think that's just these duplicate.
The top two, Guyan Valley.
We paid two deals for Guyan Valley, and we paid one for the gym and one for the high school.
But what they, on this sheet here, we don't give you a copy of this, it's got a duplicate on Guyan Valley, so.
We don't have just a gun.
There's a duplicate right there, two thirty-three, I see what you're saying there.
Oh, I see, yeah.
I just got this today, so I hadn't had a ton of time with that. The first two are the same thing.
Okay, so the first two are the same, so we only paid them two hundred thirty-three dollars for it, and then?
Forty-eight.
And thirty-eight dollars.
I'll ask about that, because that's either a duplicate or a. I'll ask about that because that's either a duplicate or she's made a mistake on the rate. I just think to ask because, of course, I've got lots of questions to ask about.
I'd like to free talk to Dalton's also, tell them, you know, we like to support local business, but we don't want to pay double for it.
Right.
It's something something range for them to...
They're not.
To charge that much money, that's funny.
That seems a little cheap for Allied, seventy-seven dollars.
Can't, uh, that's, I don't think that's right. Where'd you get the statement?
I just got an email today. Yes, I got that today.
Is this our current deal?
That's what she's proposing for next year.
Oh, next year, okay.
And, uh... But she did, she allied with, you know, our issues. They, in their letter, they said they reduced our rates. I didn't even know they could. I thought they were monitored by public service and that the rate lost part was. I thought the public service set their rates, but evidently they've got some flexibility.
Where'd he check that range at, Bill? I saw it cheating.
Yeah, I don't think any of our bills are that much. Want me to go check it now?
No, I don't.
I'll send you guys a report about our current deals are.
I know the, you know, the community group in Harvey, they, they were talking about this too. They've been talking about it, I think they've told them they give them, giving them a reduced rate. They want to get the business.
I want to think our cheapest rate is about a hundred and seventy-six dollars. And that's just kind of off the top of my head, that's about the cheapest thing anywhere.
I had last year's contract up there, but I haven't compared last year's to this year yet.
I just kind of, don't know how the other guys, they're, it's not close to being or anything.
Right. Right now, it's just information gathering right now.
Well, I mean, competition's what it is.
And Dalton's may be willing to give us a little rate if that is just...
They're going to get the trick of the war, but we've got a Mr. Gousher point out here, like to see the local businesses. If they double, I agree with that.
And, and by law, you can't give a local business, you can't give them a rate just because they're local. They kind of have to be competitive.
Is there a percentage?
You just, there you can't, there's not...
Probably used to be like ten percent.
He had a board policy one time, gave a preference to local, things on board files and that's all.
Well, there was a state policy that would allow you to give a preference to the state. That didn't apply here, but it, it looks like it's a state to do it, but it was an occasion.
Dana, Duval, we have two separate charges, one for the portals and one for the...
Yeah, there's two different locations of Duval. They're both in the back of the existing, the big school, one's on the right-hand side and one's on the left-hand side. And it's kind of, you know where the walkway is to the back of the module? It's just to the right of it.
Two separate pickups, but within yards?
Yeah, they're within probably six hundred feet. Yeah, that could be, like I said, I just got that today and that may be a mistake.
They said they could pick up West Hamlin only one time and then Guyan Valley had voted three times or maybe just two.
Well, that, the company, the company, Allied... Allied quoted frequency twice, Dalton's unquoted one pickup.
You can always dictate what happens.
Yes.
Okay, anything else on garbage?
Dana just talked trash to us.
Thanks, Dana.
All right.
Okay, anything, any other comments you're concerned with, which is to discuss?
I want to brag on bird. I was told the other day that the auditor had made a comment to your office. It was one of the best offices I've ever dealt with, the position of order. It was one of the best in the state.
I agree. I want to take that. And today is Marshall Reapers' last night.
Yeah, today is, we're in one year.
And also, I just hope the P. Corps of your offices has been one of the biggest centers in the state.
Yeah, we're number three in the state. And the counties that are beating us is Jefferson County, which is, you know, on the panhandle, you know, huge, and Berkeley County. So, you know, we're just like a little poor county, but yet we're number three in the state. And that, the one check that you, for Sean, did a report on, that was just for one quarter. So, you know, yeah, we'll have a competition going. And, you know, she's got to have a good staff, you know, it's not on me. I just make sure it happens, they do the work. But, you know, I've got a great staff.
Well, thank you and your staff. It's obvious that your heart's in the right place. I very appreciate it.
That's for sure.
You know, she keeps telling us we have to, we have to save money or make money.
Make money. You got to save it or make it. It's just like with, with the consortium, the, the RISA, where one of the handles, actually, we say, we say most in there are RISA or something.
What you want to talk about, take pride in your work and try to be number one. You did that. I think many will.
I want to take that compliment. For my staff.
But you, you could hold the staff.
Yeah, you guys know.
Been here long enough to know.
Yeah, I've been here long enough to know.
Okay, anything else? Lucas, anything else you want to discuss with us? Well, Bill Lample is gone. Back a few years ago when he was principal at the hospital, he, we had a board meeting, an LSIC meeting, Mr. Pierce. I have to talk to Mr. Snyder, I guess. The next board meeting for LSIC.
Oh, that's right. We, we were right on it.
I had been online.
On the website.
There's long inside jokes here, I think.
The prosecutor's still Mr. Stevens, according to our county website.
Would you ask him to get that deed done? He's your neighbor. Across the way. Okay. The counselor motion to adjourn till July the second, two thousand thirteen.
Second.
County office, that's all you have, though?
Yes.